Call the meeting to order. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Gary.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Preston.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
Health. Fargo-Cast Public Health will provide flu shots from noon to 6:00 Tuesday, November 2nd, on a walk-in basis during the COVID-19 Vaccine Clinic. Flu shots will be available to anyone six months and older. Receiving the annual flu vaccine can reduce doctor visits as well as missed work and school due to the flu. Library. The library's digital resource collection has added Create-A-Bug, an online resource featuring arts and crafts tutorials. Library cardholders have unlimited access to this new resource to develop creative skills. Creative Bug has hundreds of videos covering sewing, painting, jewelry, knitting, wood engraving, and more presented by expert crafters and artists to help the users start a new project or hone on existing crafting skills with patterns, videos, and daily practice ideas. As part of the One Book One Community Event Series, the library, along with Indigenous Association and the FM Missing and Murdered Indigenous People Task Force, is hosting a panel discussion and community conversation about local, state, and federal efforts to combat the missing and murdered indigenous people endemic Wednesday at 6:30 PM at the City Commission Room at City Hall. Featured panelists are Representative Ruth Buffalo, Lisa Yellowbird Chase, Laura Youngbird, Whitney Fear, and Amanda Strauss. It should be a good panel to see. Registration for session two of the library's weekly Fall Stories Time series for toddlers in preschool starts this week. Police. The police department has been invited to participate in the Golden Drive Homeless Kids Stock Sock Drive and will be accepting donations of new youth socks through December 3rd. This group has expressed a great need in particular for elementary-age boys' socks. Donations can be dropped off at the lobby of Police Headquarters Building at 10525th Street North. Planning. Downtown planning ramps and garages were very busy on weekends this summer and fall, with more than 34,000 cars taking advantage of free parking. Saturdays were busiest with 1,000 to 1,700 cars each Saturday. Parking is free on weekends in Block 9 Civic Center, Roberts Commons, and Merchantile Parking Ramps. The Comms G.I. team has two videos for us this evening. The first is an introduction to the new EV charging station at City Hall West Parking Lot, and the second showcases the pavement condition survey recently undertaken through the city by the Engineering Department. We'll start with the EV station first.
Every four years, we hire a consultant to come into town and do a pavement condition survey. We're looking for data on our total network to see overall how our condition is, but then by being able to get like a block-by-block rating of where our street conditions are, that really allows us to prioritize where to put our money. We have to figure out what the right strategy is at the right time, and this data really allows us to do that. So it is all GPS-based, and then what it is going to do is it's going to really take all the data that they calculate for an entire stretch, like a block-by-block segment, and then we're going to get a number rating from a 0 to 100 rating, and it's going to give it a score. And so if it's a score of 20, that's really poor, and we know that that roadway is probably too far gone, we need to just reconstruct. If it's a score of 90, it's really good, right? And there's probably some very inexpensive preventative maintenance things that we can do to continue to keep that roadway at a high level. We get people that call in and say, hey, this road is terrible. It's the worst one in town. This is a very analytical way to look at the data and understand, is it a ride issue? Is it a distress issue? What are the issues? Because again, we have a really big network. We only have so much money we can spend, so we have to do it really smartly. And again, this allows us to do that really effectively.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving Item 10 from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda?
I so move.
Is there a second? Second from Strand. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 18, 2021 Regular Meeting?
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 1 through 39 excluding Item 10, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Preston.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Yes. To the Regular Agenda, we have resident comments and no people signed up tonight, so we will go to the public input opportunity. Item number 40-A. Application for transfer of Class B alcoholic beverage license from Dakota Liquors Doing Business's Main Avenue Liquors located at 4,000 Main Avenue to Long Hall Saloon Doing Business's Main Avenue Liquors to be located at 3838 Main Avenue, continued from the 9/20/21 Regular Meeting. Steve Sprague to explain.
I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, but by law, we can't start the public hearing until 5:15, so we might have to move on to something different.
Oh, okay. Well...
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that we do the Consent Agenda item since that's ahead of that schedule, if that's appropriate?
Suggesting 10?
Yes.
Okay. We'll bring 10 to the Agenda item now at this point. I think Commissioner Preston, you wanted this brought forward?
Yeah, I just noticed that in the communication to the Finance Committee, staff had indicated that a financing plan for the baseball stadium would be included, and I didn't see one. So I'm wondering if somebody could just give us a...
I think Rob Solvick has that answer for us, and he's coming to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, that would be my lack of completely understanding the English language. I meant to tell the, ask the Finance Committee, City Fargo Finance Committee, to approve the bids and send a financing option to the City, to the City Commission for approval of everything. So in the, in the action report that you received and in the conversations surrounding, at the Finance Committee surrounding this, they did approve the bids and designate both the building fund, capital building fund 402 to provide funds for this that have been approved in the 2022 overall city budget, as well as the funding that has been approved for Newman Stadium for capital improvements in the 2021 and 2022 approved budgets.
Any questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but Mr. Chair, since we have Rob here, Rob, would you mind giving an update a little bit about the, the actual, the importance of maintaining the, the stadium as the City of Fargo's? And just talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind, especially since you have about six minutes. We'll let you take as much as you want.
We can do other business too.
Well, I really, I really appreciate those who let me have this opportunity to do this today and to make stuff up for your fill time, so thank you for that. But yeah, you know, it is, it is important to maintain the facility, obviously, open, was built in 1995, 1996. Things are reaching the end of, end-of-life cycle with it being 25, 30 years old. So the roof has been replaced, the metal roof on top, and now with this stuff, with this action, we'll be replacing all of the rooftop HVAC units, as well as all the pressbox windows, and the stadium, the expansion and concrete joints and the caulking in the stadium seating. So we're essentially trying to seal up the envelope of the building from moisture getting in, which will then allow the tenants of the building, both the FM Redhawks and North Dakota State University Baseball, to make some improvements on their end in those areas that if we didn't seal up the building from moisture, it would just be a constant redo of the, with the moisture issues that are occurring in that facility.
Is there a second to your motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I've got a couple other things. So would you talk about, so even though this, it is the city asset, NDSU and the Redhawks are expected to participate in this, and so Bruce Grub and, and Rob have been working on getting, making sure that that happens because it's in the past that hasn't been going on, and it's very important. They had water on the lower level, and if we don't correct that, eventually that's going to damage the property, and it's an asset of the taxpayers as the City of Fargo. So, and actually, you were going to have a meeting, if you don't mind, we don't need to know the details, but can you just give or summarize how that went?
The meeting with the Redhawks was very good. We had it last week. They shared with plans that they're making some changes and updates in their office areas and getting ready to do things in their locker room or locker room areas down below once this work is completed alongside of the work we're doing to make sure that the building is maintained and kept up. And we will be having conversations over the next course of time to figure out some different financial arrangements with both the revenues and different expenses as well.
Okay, can I go ahead? Commissioner Pepcorn, now? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Preston.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. I'll make it easy for you. We'll just go from the back of the agenda, then it'll be easier. So Item 53, Application for Property Tax Resemption for Improvements Made to Buildings. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Preston.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Item 52, Recommendation for Appointment to the Gresh Initiative Fund Board of Directors. Do you have my recommendation? Is there a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Preston.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 51, Recommendation for Appointment as Director of Facilities Management. Bruce Grub's going to introduce this. Bruce, you've got three minutes. Make it last till 5:15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Michael's been up here twice already, but thank you for fitting us in.
I don't think that microphone is working, is it? Or...
Can you electrify the mic?
I think Greg's working on that. Make your live.
Well, try to speak loudly. As you might be aware, our former Director of Facilities Management resigned recently to return to his family home to attend to family issues, and so we conducted a search to fill that position, to find our next Director of Facilities Management, and that search has been completed. And as a result, in front of you tonight is a recommendation to appoint Becky Majeris to the position of Director of Facilities Management. There were seven members as part of a selection committee that independently ranked the applications as well as scored the interviews. We got 27 total applications, of which we interviewed five, and happy to report that Becky finished highest in scoring on both the application reviews and the interviews. So it's my pleasure to offer on behalf of the selection committee the recommendation in front of you tonight to appoint Becky Majeris as the City of Fargo's next Director of Facilities Management, and she comes from Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota as facilities manager, excellent background, excellent interview. Just would really be happy if you would support our recommendation tonight for Becky's appointment.
Becky, you want to say anything, or...
Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Any questions, the Commissioners? Could I have a motion?
Oops, sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Preston.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Now, we want to give a five-year plan of all our facilities, Becky, and within a couple of weeks. Can you do that? So now we'll go back to Steve Sprague. It is now 5:15 and 10 seconds beyond that, so now we can ask you to lead us through this.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The mayor already introduced this, a transfer of a Class B alcoholic beverage license. This is Dakota Main, Dakota Liquors Doing Business's Main Avenue Liquors located at 4,000 Main, and the business is being sold in its totality to Art Simonsen of Simonsen Station Stores, who happens to have an empty building sitting right next to his gas station, and so he wants to be able to locate that off sale at that facility. Gone through the background check and have come up with no issues. There was one question at Liquor Control about whether or not this was going to be an on and off sale, and it is not. It is just off sale. So although the Long Hall Saloon is operating in Grand Forks as both, you know, an on, on sale and off, this will be off sale only.
So anyone present who wishes to speak regarding the transfer of license? Anyone who wanted to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Preston.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item B, Application and Transfer of Class A Alcoholic Beverage License from The Bowler Incorporated Doing Business as The Bowler to be located at 2630 South University Drive. Ownership change. Steve Sprague.
So Mayor, on this one, the longtime owner, James Tandeski, passed away, and this is just transferring and keeping it within the family. Will be Robert Tandeski will be the owner, and then James, who is the grandson of James, is going to be the manager of this facility. There were some issues on the manager's background check. If you had questions about that, I'd have to bring the chief up to answer those. I think that'd be the best way.
Any questions about manager? Commissioner Pepcorn, were there any issues you saw?
Well, yes. Yes, there were, and I guess to me, some of them were misdemeanors from 20 years ago, and I think the chief talked to him directly. I don't want to speak for the chief, but basically, these were indiscretions from when he was a fairly young person. He has changed his ways, and so I guess to summarize it, that's what I would say. They were things from a long time ago, and so that's why the liquor control, the issues, the questions did come up with us, and I guess, Steve, I think that's kind of a quick summary of it.
Steve, just as a question, we're transferring a liquor license. Do we also look into management whenever we do a liquor license? Because you're basically just, one owner died, you're transferring it. What does the manager have to do with it?
Well, generally speaking, the manager is the person that's boots on the ground, is going to be the one managing, running the day-to-day operations. In many cases, it's also the owner, owner and manager, but we do, to answer your question, we do the background check on the ownership group and the managers. And going forward, not to let the cat out of the bag or to, you know, get ahead of ourselves, but we have a number of changes to our renewal process, which is going to include a background check on an annual basis of the owners, the people, the decision-makers, and also of the, of the management group, the people that are actually doing the managing. So as I said, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but it's something the chief and Nancy and I met, and we put together a list of discussion items that we would like to bring to you, probably in a brown bag to start with, so that both, probably a joint brown bag with Liquor Control and the City Commission, and then work through, try to get some of these changes implemented before renewal time.
So, and in the public wish to speak about this application and transfer this license? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. All right, Preston, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to make sure that we are treating everybody equally. So there was an issue with just a more recent transfer or renewal issue where one of the owners had a similar kind of disorderly conduct in his background, and that was focused in on. So I don't know, this might be a question for the chief, if he could differentiate between that circumstance and this one.
Okay. In terms of what we look at, we look at whether or not the incident has any bearing on their ability to manage the facility and work with our city government cooperatively. As you recall, the instance in which the license was not recommended involved an after-hours party and conflict with the police and a whole host of other things that were rather egregious from a public safety perspective. This particular incident with this individual is from eight years ago versus one year ago, I believe, which the other one was, and does not have any of those tenants. It was basically a situation that occurred inside a bar while he was not working as a bartender, a conflict with another individual.
This one wasn't?
Right.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Gary. Any, Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor, and you know, I'm going to, similarly, similar to Commissioner Preston, how do we know the difference between these criminal background checks from one application to the next and the criteria of what thresholds are we really, and where are the cutoffs? If something's a year ago, or 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, or 20 years ago, I just don't know what our rules are.
Yes. I can respond to that. So as Steve mentioned, we're actually looking at a package of changes. There is existing ordinances that oversee the background information, like right now it says 10 years for a felony. It says so many instances related to alcohol within two years. None of these, none of the existing ordinance guidance that's in place right now would be in conflict with this request that we have before us, but in addition, we do delve in and get the information. So we're able, as the Law Force Department Agency, to actually get the information. We interview the applicants or the persons that are under the background check to corroborate whether or not, you know, what they, how they explain the incident and compare it to the actual incident itself in order to establish, you know, the veracity of the information. And then I explain all of that to the Liquor Control Board as well in terms of the details to allow them, because they, you know, in, I think in the big picture, the Liquor Control Board can still opt not to approve something. I'm really presented from, here's the information that we have based on the, in keeping with the existing ordinance, and whether or not the police department feels that these incidents have bearing on their ability to appropriately manage, run, work cooperatively with our city government in this particular business.
If I might, just, thank you, Chief. So if we have somebody applying for licenses and we have what you might call flag, red flag surfacing, does that put it into a lane where going forward, we have some scrutiny expected or probationary period to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Or is it just approved, and if something happens, that's all, just like anybody else?
No, I think there's, there is definitely scrutiny, I think, with our new board that we, they know are much better informed in their decision-making. We provide all of the information to them in terms of the details of the incident that may or may not correlate to whether or not this person should be in that position. So I think that, that that's a good process. The suggested ordinance changes, I think will even provide greater oversight to that overall process, and some of the guidance that exists now, I think we are a little bit too lean in what we're looking at, and we're not looking broadly enough at, at these things, and especially if there is a pattern or a recent pattern of behavior. So again, it's all the, we'll provide all that information to the Liquor Control Board, and then it'll come up to you as a recommendation, and certainly happy to answer those same questions with the commission.
Any other, Commissioner Preston?
Steve, if I could make a recommendation, when you're putting your memo together with the recommendation, if you would just indicate the Liquor Control Board vote, was it a unanimous one here? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Strand.
No.
Preston.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Application to transfer Class A alcoholic beverage license from International African Restaurant and Nightclub Doing Business as International African Restaurant and Nightclub at 518 Properties LLC to 518 Properties to be located at 4554 7th Avenue South. Steve Sprague to explain.
And Commissioners and Mayor, this is the African nightclub transfer that you had set a timeline of 30 days on, and we received the agreement to transfer or to sell the license before that 30 days was up, and so then we just followed through with the normal process of going to Liquor Control after the background check and then bringing it here, looking for that final approval. Now, this application, at this time, we only had the ownership group. They had not named a manager and had not identified an operating concept yet, and so Liquor Control requested that once they name a manager and we do the background check on that manager, and they identify the operating concept, that that information be brought back to the Liquor Control. And so their recommendation was a conditional approval. So basically, they were saying they approve of this ownership group, but they want to see that, that manager and that operating concept.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer license? Anybody present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, but the one question I had for Steve was, so when we conditionally approved this, they were gonna, they were interviewing, have they still not hired a manager at this time?
I have not heard any additional information at this time, so...
So, Mr. Chair, my perspective is, I mean, we, that's very important that we obviously go through a background check, and it comes through Liquor Control and the City Commission. And so that, and the one thing I would say is, I hope it keeps the same thing. I think it's a good, it's, it's a good business, and with good ownership and good management, it's a, it's a good addition to the community, but I do think it's very important that we know who the manager is, and then it's a very proven person, because I think that's critical to the future safety and success and all those things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but then I'll probably have a friendly amendment if I could.
Okay.
It makes sense to me that we would have the same kind of motion that the Liquor Control Board passed, which is it's contingent on the full-time manager being named and the business concept is presented back to us. So if I could offer that as an amendment?
Is there a second to the amendment?
So if, do I, is that a friendly amendment that I need to do anything, or do I not need to do anything?
If you want to accept it as a friendly amendment, you could add it to your motion.
I would be happy to accept, accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. John Strand, we don't have to vote on that, right? We just voted on the whole motion, right?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Gary.
When was the last time we approved a license without a management group and without a concept?
I, I can't think of a time right off the top of my head.
Because we haven't. So that's the point. We've had liquor licenses come before us in the past who wanted a liquor license, but we denied them because they didn't have a layout of the facility, right? It might be the same, it probably will be the same, but we don't know that. They could expand it two times. They could shrink it. We don't know. We don't know who the managers are. We just talked about that with the last, with The Bowler, and how that's a problem, and John, you voted against it, I think, for that reason. So we're bending over backwards again for this. We're not following our own procedures. I am not saying strip them of the license. What I'm saying is, we shouldn't be voting on this at this time. In good faith, I think they're doing the right thing, and they're trying to get things in order, but we shouldn't be taking a vote at this time. I'll vote against it at this time, and in the future, I may vote for it, but I'm not going to vote on a partial liquor license, because basically now we're just holding a license in place for one person, and that shouldn't be what we should be doing.
So Eric Johnson, don't we have a precedent because of a previous motion that we have here that they had so many days to transfer the license? Is that what we're reacting to here a little bit?
I think, Mr. Chair, I think what Steve Sprague explained was, they made the, they made the shot clock by getting their application in the purchase agreement within the 30 days, and then the auditor's office, which seems like a reasonable thing to do, just said, well, we have to run it through its paces, and that started with the Liquor Control Board. So I, I think the underlying assumption here that's been taken is that they've met the timeline that was set by the City Commission. If you act on it...
Well, we normally ask, Commissioner Gary, comments is, we normally would approve the license and the manager at the same time, so this is more in reaction to the previous 30 days as what... So, this is more in reaction to the previous 30 days to swap the license, but now they're not set up to do business yet, right?
You could continue this to a date and time certain and, and sort of refrain from taking action other than to move the ball forward if you want. This is a public hearing, right? So, you could move it to a date and time certain so you don't have to worry about rep publication. That'd be one option you would have.
Commissioner Strand, you look like you had a.
No, I'm just.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, but essentially, that's what we're doing now. I, I would just say, in essence, that's what we're doing, because we're, we're approving the license, but they still have to go through and have us, have a plan and a management background check. So, in essence, that's what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Preston?
I guess the word that is concerning me is the approval. That word. So, I guess, Commissioner Garrick, if you want to do a continuance motion, I'd be very supportive.
Okay. Yeah, you know, and the consternation I have is, let's say they come back with a manager that doesn't pass muster, right? And then now we're continuing it further and further down the line. Let's say they come back with a concept that doesn't fit within the boundary, and that, and then we have to come back and do it all over again. And we're, we're then expanding the month we gave them to however many months until we decide not to anymore. So, I'll move to continue this until the next meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting. And if it's not in place, just anecdotally, I urge that we do not support the transfer.
Is there a second?
I would second that continuance motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, then, does that jeopardize what we basically told them that they had to do? And that's for Eric.
Eric?
Well, at least implicit in your action, I think, is that they, they met the deadline by having the purchase agreement in, in Steve's office by, within the 30 days. So, I think you have some time to, to react. Unless you want to take a different approach. I mean, that, that sounded like, because Steve took that option, seemed like a reasonable thing to do, but your motion from a month or so ago.
But the manages, you could table it for two weeks, or you could do a continuance. What's the difference?
There isn't any difference.
But, Mr. Chairman, my concern is that we don't jeopardize, it's a substantial amount of money that the previous owners could lose if, if this isn't technically done correctly. That's what I'm concerned about, that, that if, I know that they've done that, but that's what concerns me, Eric. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You called attention to something that hadn't dawned on me. There may be something between the buyer and the seller that I'm unfamiliar with, a deadline of some sort that requires approval within a certain amount of time. I, I don't know if that's the case, but perhaps that's what you're.
Steve, do you know the contingencies on the buyer or the license?
I know they had concerns about this being approved tonight so that they could consummate that deal between the buyer and the seller.
Buyer here tonight? No?
So, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if this is talking out of school.
Two of the owner group are, are in the back there.
Can we just comment to us? Public speaking is over, but we just like a clarification coming to this mic here. We just want a clarification. If we do not approve this tonight, does it jeopardize in any way the transfer of ownership?
Hey, Dan Hicks, part of the ownership group, currently named as the manager on the application. As been stated, we are searching, we're, we actually have a meeting again tomorrow, two more meetings this week to finalize, hopefully finalize, our management group. As been stated, we want the right person to run the concept, and our current plan would be, hopefully, to keep the same type of concept in place, because we believe it's an underserved area in the metro. So, the current purchase agreement, more or less, I think, is, the contingencies are based on the city approval, because we, we don't want to purchase a liquor license that then gets revoked from us and goes back to the city and, and we've lost our money. So, they have, it really comes down to, I believe, the terms of the current owner's contract, which they purchased on a contract, not a contract for deed. But if the holder of the license does not get paid off in a certain period of time, he could go after that license, and you're going to have another. I don't believe that, Dave may have a comments on that, but I don't believe, I think he would have to come back in and get it approved to go back into his name. However, that, that's the main transition issue and timeline is, what happens to this license if it does get extended? And I don't think we have an issue extending to the next meeting as long as we don't lose our opportunity to get that, that data to you in a timely manner.
Any questions?
Point of, point of. Isn't there a public hearing that should precede deliberation, or have we concluded it?
I think I did public hearing.
Did you conclude the public hearing?
I just don't have a motion.
Wouldn't the public hearing follow the motion?
No, you have a public hearing. Steve, I thought we did public hearing.
You, you did public hearing. You had a motion originally by Commissioner Pepcorn, seconded by Commissioner Preston, then a friendly amendment, and then Commissioner Garrick made the motion to continue for two weeks, date and time certain, and I believe seconded by Commissioner Preston.
Commissioner Preston?
So, as I'm looking at this, I don't see any difference between continuing this versus the motion as passed by the Liquor Control Board, where they're saying, before the license is issued, we need to see these two things. So, either way, you can't start selling or opening until we've seen it anyway. So, I don't see any difference between the two.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, the one thing I want to go back to is, until we approve the, the sale of the license, the, the past owners are at risk of losing the money that they have. Do you get what I'm saying? And so that's my concern, because it's a significant amount of money, and I believe that would be penalizing them much more than, than we should. And so, I, I support that. Whatever way you want to go is fine, but I think we have to be careful, because I think if we approve this, then the, the former owners are out, they will close that. We still will have the opportunity to review the, you know, the background check and the management and the, and the site. But, anyway, that, that's my thing. That's my, the point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Strand?
You know, the past owners were at risk, especially when we didn't re-award them their license. And the reasons we didn't re-award them their license are very similar to this application. They didn't have management, they didn't have a plan, they had people that had misrepresented the truths in their applications, and they had interactions with the police, in this instance, in the last year. So, I don't know if we wanted to worry about the original owners, we would have given them a chance to come up with a management plan and to come up with a manager. But we denied them that opportunity. We think we're trying to help them not lose as much money in the sale of that license and/or asset. But now we're back to the square one, where we've got another applicant who doesn't have a plan and doesn't have a manager and has some questions about involvements with police.
Mr. Chairman, there's a huge difference. Convicted felons with, with murders and killings, and that, that's a lot different. It's, it's not comparable at all. And so to compare the, the current ownership to the past ownership, you saw the video of the handguns throughout the establishment, this is not similar at all. And so, to me, that's, that's, that's not a, a good comparison. Thank you.
Well, I think what we have now as a continuance is a, was the second motion brought out. So, we have to vote first on the continuance. I think Commissioner Pepcorn has a good point, a transfer of license, but then the Liquor Board said they had to have their management team. So, that first motion you made, which still, they'd have to bring their management team to us. I think if they do the continuance, that says two weeks. I think if you do the motion you're talking to, it could take a month, right? There's no timeframe on that Liquor Control Board issue. So, I think you're just trying to tighten it down to two weeks with the continuance on its part of it. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't sit on the Liquor Control Board, so I'll ask for information I don't quite know. What's the history of this building? Has it been the same owners forever? And is it those owners, or when did the Five Eighteen Group take over ownership?
I don't know exactly when Five Eighteen purchased the building, but, so the, the history of the building, it was originally J.T. Cigaro. It was built as a cigar bar, and then smoking ordinance has changed, and so that kind of a concept probably wasn't going to be very successful. The original owners sold the business to somebody else that ran it, just tried to run it as a bar. After a short period of time, I'd say less than two years, that was going to be unsuccessful. And that person closed the building. He then sold the liquor license, and the, the building itself went back to the bank. And then this Five Eighteen Group, I believe, purchased it from the bank and has held it for probably a couple of years, maybe three years or so, something like that.
Bear with me. This Five Eighteen Group would have contracted and arranged for the previous license holders to operate out of that building?
They were leasing the building to the African International Restaurant and Nightclub.
And, and then now those building owners want to take over ownership of the license?
I think that they're looking at being able to, you know, have a, you know, you're not, you're not depending on somebody to pay you rent so you can pay the mortgage. You know, now, now they're depending on themselves to run a successful business in which they can, they can solve or pay that mortgage, and so.
Commissioner Strand?
Bear with me. When Mr. Severson, the previous owner from Ashley, North Dakota, had, and the police chief made reference to his interactions with the police, could you remind me, was he, was he charged? Was he arrested? Was he found guilty? Just remind me of.
Sure, Mr. Corey Schultz?
Yep.
Yes, so it wasn't so much the.
Schultz, I'm sorry.
Yes. So, it wasn't the, the actual crime that, that was of concern? It was Mr. Schultz's reaction to interaction with the police? And, and he had some very negative behaviors during that interaction, including fleeing from police, struggling with police as they arrested him, some very detrimental things that were said to the police officer in the ride down to Cass County Jail, and then struggling with the jailers, too, so.
And was he found guilty and convicted?
You know, I've got to go to the expert.
I'm the expert, but. Yes. He was, and there was a deferral agreement. If nothing happened in, I believe, a year, that they would nullify it, but it was still was a conviction. It still occurred. He was found guilty of it.
So, that was an Alfred plea?
I don't know if it was an Alfred plea, it was some, the city prosecutors, I don't know what actually you would call that.
Sounds, sounds like it was a deferred prosecution.
Deferred.
That's where they enter a guilty plea on a condition that they kind of keep their nose clean for a certain period of time, and if so, then the charge is more or less withdrawn.
Right. And so, in the, the current one that you're looking at, this incident had no conduct similar whatsoever, and in fact, was dismissed outright by the prosecutor because there wasn't probable cause for a violation. In fact, we looked into this as well, and an arrest probably shouldn't have even been made in this case. So, it was rightfully dismissed.
You're talking the Scottsdale incidents?
Yes.
Incident. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We're going to vote first on the continuance motion. Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Now, we'll, we will vote on the main motion that came in here, and could you read it for us, shall we, just so I have it right?
I don't have it.
How about Steve?
Steve, do you have what Liquor Control had as a motion?
I believe so. I move to approve the transfer of Class A alcoholic beverage license from African International Nightclub and Restaurant, doing business as African International Nightclub and Restaurant to Five Eighteen Properties. That's my motion, not the Liquor Controls motion, right?
I want Liquor Controls motion.
So.
Mr. Chair, so Steve, can you repeat my motion, but then Commissioner Preston made a friendly motion? If you could, if you could read those two, that's, that's more what I want to hear. Maybe Eric has something to.
If you don't have it, I can pinch you.
Okay, yeah, you can pinch me.
Yes, so your motion was to, to approve it, much like Steve's motion is just stated, with the friendly amendment was by Commissioner Preston, that, that they need to come back with a approved full-time business manager being named, and with the full concept also having been submitted and approved. I restate that correctly, Commissioner Preston?
Before the license is issued.
Before the license is issued, yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Next item is going to be a continuance D, so continues to 111521 Meadowview Addition. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item E, Reeves Addition, Fourth and Fifth Fourteenth Street North, Ninth and Nineteenth and a Fourteen and a Half Street North, 1418 First Avenue North. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on a 10521. Zoning change from a limited industrial to downtown mixed use with a conditional overlay. This will be the first reading of the rezoning, and we finally have Donald Kress back at the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. Both these items include ordinances that were prepared by the City Attorney's Office. Our first item tonight here, as the mayor has stated, is the Reeves Addition. It's a zone change with a conditional overlay. This property is located along First Avenue North between 14 and a Half Streets and 14th Street North. You may be aware, this is 1418 First Street North. This building here was recently damaged by fire and is currently under demolition. These properties are zoned LI, limited industrial. The proposal is to rezon them to DMU, Downtown Mixed Use. You see, there is adjacent DMU here in the purple. These, we'll have a detail of this here. This is a close-up of that, basically. Dropping it out. So, these are the properties involved. These properties are going to be redeveloped by the applicant. They have a plan for this. These, these additional properties here, these property owners did sign on to the zone change. They're here to create a continuous piece of DMU. They are not going to be redeveloping their properties, although the zone change will apply to them. But this is the primary area to be redeveloped. The conditional overlay on this relates to the fact that, as the DMU is going, proposed to go a little bit westward here, it's a different situation than the DMU that would be just downtown here, just a little different situation. The lots are laid out differently. Probably wouldn't be building right to the edge of the lot line. And so the conditional overlay sort of mitigates that or adjusts that for this position of the property that is on a corridor to downtown, but not truly in downtown itself. There's not been, at this point, a corridor study of First Avenue North or other corridors leading to downtown, but this DMU with the conditional overlay is working, staff working with the applicant here, creates a zone that, you know, if we would do one of those conditional overlays, or one of those corridor studies, rather, this would be a zone like we'd create for that corridor. So, that's the background of the conditional overlay. These are some photographs of the property from a few weeks ago, but I went by this morning, and it's basically the same. The giraffe is still there, I believe. This is along First Avenue North, 14th and a Half Street there, on the corner of 14th and a Half and NP, and then here's looking the other way. We believe these roads will eventually be paved in the near future, although that is not part of the zone change. The, the applicant, Kevin Bartram, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. The Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Is anyone present wishing to speak? Now, I'll close the public hearing, but I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
It'll be a good addition to the community, good, looks like a very good plan. Item F, Oak Manor, second addition, in fourteen oh seven Oak Manor Avenue South, in fourteen oh one and fourteen oh five Twenty-Fifth Avenue South, approval recommended by the Planning Commission, ten five twenty-one, a zoning change from limited commercial to multi-dwelling residential and a multi-dwelling residential MR3, first reading of the zoning ordinance, Donald Kress to explain.
Yes, sir, thank you, again, this is just a zoning change here, Commissioners, these properties are located, uh, our landmark here would be the Kmart site, twenty-three oh one South University Drive, uh, these are the properties just to the west of it, uh, the Kmart site is not involved in this zone change, uh, these properties are made up of some condominium and apartment rental units, as we see their zoning here is LI, or LC, rather, limited commercial, these buildings were built in the nineteen seventies, uh, they were all built there between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen seventy-seven, under the nineteen sixty-five zoning ordinance, which was a commercial zone at that time, there is no commercial element to these properties, and so we are, uh, initiating, or conducting a staff-initiated rezone, you will see that this property down here, uh, which is the fourth piece of this lot, was rezoned to MR1 in two thousand six, so this idea got started some time ago, we're just, uh, finishing that off here, the lots would be zoned like this, this would be the proposed MR1, and these would be MR3, note that there is no additional development being proposed, this is just to, to make the zoning match what's on the ground, uh, and we do this occasionally, uh, staff initiates these occasionally when things come to our attention, um, we did have meetings with the, uh, the residents in this area back in August, and, uh, you also received a, uh, a letter by email this morning, uh, from a resident who lives just to the west of here, uh, it appears, uh, upon reading that letter that that, uh, residence's concerns really applied to the development of the Kmart site, uh, their letter stated they did not have any concerns about this proposed rezone, this is a separate project, it's been to the Planning Commission, but has not yet been scheduled before your commission, we expect you to be seeing it here in the next few weeks, uh, so, again, just, uh, rezone this, there's no cost to the applicant, or to the residents for this, it doesn't affect their ownership, it just corrects the zoning so that it's, the zoning matches what's actually developed on the property. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen, that concludes staff's presentation, thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak, if not, I close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Preston Strand? Discussion, roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Actually, Mr. Gary seconded that.
I'm sorry, John.
Sorry.
And Desi Fleming has come in person and talked to us tonight, very nice, COVID nineteen update, congratulations, thanks for coming to see us.
Thank you very much, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, so statewide, the COVID wave kind of remains in that little plateauing pattern, we have just over thirty-one hundred active cases, Cass County is currently at seven hundred and sixteen active cases, weekend numbers are typically lower due to our testing, um, volume kind of declines over the weekends, uh, we only had twenty-five cases, new cases reported, um, over the weekend, October was the fourth highest month for deaths in the state, um, we had a hundred and thirty-six. COVID deaths, um, totals for Cass now are two hundred and forty-six individuals, both deaths and hospitalizations are remaining high even with the cases plateauing due to that kind of lagging effect, there are hundreds and seventy individuals hospitalized statewide, capacity continues to be an issue, as of this morning in the six largest hospitals across the state, there were, um, they report their staffed beds, we had around seven ICU beds, four regular adult beds, one Peds ICU, and ten general Peds, and six of the open ICU beds were in Fargo. Cass County remains in the high transmission category per CDC, which, uh, averages cases, positivity, testing numbers, along with deaths and hospitalizations over that past seven-day period, the only decrease was in our, um, testing, which was down about three percent, Cass continues to do about twenty to twenty-four percent of the total testing statewide, and our positivity rate average has been remaining around that ten percent mark. Uh, the age category with the most active cases in the state is the thirty to thirty-nine year olds, and followed by the zero to eleven year olds, uh, vaccine uptake continues to increase, but at a kind of a slow pace, ACIP is meeting tomorrow to discuss the emergency youth authorization for the Pfizer vaccine for the five to eleven year olds, so once they give some direction on that, we will probably see that moving forward, um, at Fargo-Cass, we will, if that group is authorized, we will be handling that a little bit differently than our mass clinics, kids don't tend to do as well in the mass clinic setting, so we will, we will be handling that in our clinic, um, with individual appointments. Uh, efforts continue within the community on vaccine offerings, we have our, um, our vaccination rates are going up slightly, um, not, not significantly, um, the demand for boosters has remained quite high, we have been doing our booster clinics at Fargo-Cass and have had really good success with that, um, booster doses are now approved for all three vaccines, along with mixing and matching, which is a, a good thing, so for example, if someone had the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, originally they can now get an mRNA if they want to add that in to, um, kind of broaden their protection. Eligibility criteria for the boosters are quite broad, the only verification you need is if, that you're over eighteen, and then they want to check the interval, um, that it's been long enough, so Johnson and Johnson vaccine, um, a booster can be given two months after the initial dose, with the Pfizer and Moderna, it's six months, so those are the things they're looking for, um, boosters are really important, you know, just to cover that waning immunity in, in some individuals, and of course, the initial series of vaccines are critical for us in preventing, uh, serious illness and death, so please get your vaccines, get your flu vaccines, um, and vaccine availability can be found at vaccinefinder.org, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner, Mr. Preston?
So Desi, it's really nice to see you in person.
Thank you.
So the, the death rate, I would assume that's changed because we're seeing fewer and fewer people coming in for testing, is that accurate, or the death rate over time, I'm talking nationally and perhaps even locally, do you have any sense?
Is, is why it's increasing, or?
It, it seems like the death rate is higher compared to the number of positive cases that we're seeing, um, am I interpreting that right?
Well, I think it's, one of the reasons it's higher has been with the Delta variant, you know, because earlier on, we kind of, this, Delta seems to be having a little more serious impact, um, than the previous variants, so I think that is part of it, I think it's, we're seeing more serious illness and death, especially in those that are unvaccinated, um, I think we also have, you know, testing, yes, we certainly are missing a ton of, you know, mild cases, asymptomatic cases, we have people that refuse to test, even if they're symptomatic, because they don't want to contribute to the numbers, lots of reasons for that, and I think it's been a challenge with, with the healthcare, you know, really, it's strapped out the resources, um, I think quality of care sometimes can be an issue when you're, you know, full and people are sitting in an emergency room out in the western part of the state for six, eight hours or overnight, I mean, all of those things I think come into play and, in adding to our death totals, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not sure if this is a public health question, but with regard to the federal mandate for federal employees and contractors to be vaccinated, where are we at with that, are we enforcing it, requiring it, is it in place?
They haven't really come out with, like, more, like an ocean rule that people are waiting for and, and different things to qualify that, there's, the agencies that are Medicare and Medicaid certified, they have to do, um, mandatory vaccines, a lot of businesses are just taking the initiative to go ahead with it, knowing that it's coming, so at public health, we have, um, we have an option for people, if they, if they choose to not be vaccinated, then they have to test, um, rapid test twice weekly, and then report that in, so that we know that we can keep our workforce safe.
And Mayor, if I might, just one more question, I don't have the data to confirm this, but it seems to me that lately, I know an awful lot of people who are turning COVID positive, who are vaccinated, and, and I know, I know one person who died, who had been vaccinated, how big an issue is this, of the vaccinated people, now the, the efficacy of the, their vaccines and time have, have waned, and, and, you know, so how, how, how big of a crisis are we potentially facing with the vaccinated versus unvaccinated, and previously vaccinated, who, who, the, the results aren't there?
Right, so obviously with Delta, this has been more of an issue as well, and let me also say, we, we recognize that vaccines are not a hundred percent, this is still a remarkably good vaccine, so statewide, we have three hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-six fully vaccinated people, we have had, um, breakthrough cases of nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three, which represents two-point-seven percent of that total group, hospitalizations are four hundred and twenty-two, which is a zero-point-one percent, and deaths have been ninety-eight, which is a point-zero-two percent, so although, yes, it's happening, and we recognize it's happening, it's still very, very low numbers when you take it all into consideration, but certainly with Delta, it is happening more with breakthrough cases, which is why then, you know, the booster discussion, and, you know, part of this is just, they, they proved the safety part of the vaccine, like, right away, they're very confident with that, the part that they're still kind of working on is, what's the best interval, what's the, you know, and to get that waning immunity, to make sure everybody has got optimal, um, coverage, that's kind of what they, you know, they kind of make some changes and some adaptations, and then they study that, and then they implement it, and it's kind of just, it's kind of how science works, you just kind of, you know, study and learn and, and make changes as you need to.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Desi.
Thanks.
Request from the Fargo-Moorhead West Fargo Chamber of Commerce to discuss potential building development opportunity for Business Resource Hub, Shannon Full is going to present tonight.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to be here today, my name is Shannon Full, I'm the President and CEO of the Fargo-Moorhead West Fargo Chamber, I'm joined in the council chambers, uh, here, or the commission chambers, uh, with, uh, members of my team, uh, chamber members, board members, as well as, um, our facilities committee, so, uh, tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about an exciting opportunity, if I know how to advance the slides. Hopefully I've did, there we go, um, uh, an exciting opportunity that we were, were bringing in front of you, uh, so all of you are aware, uh, that the chamber, uh, the Fargo-Moorhead West Fargo Chamber has been operate, in operation since nineteen ninety-eight, located in, in the Yum-Kum Center in Moorhead, uh, the chamber's mission is to really be a catalytic leader for growth and prosperity of our region, not just our businesses, but individuals, uh, and fellow partner community members as well, over nineteen hundred and eighty businesses and organizations are members of the chamber, uh, and we are continuing to experience growth, just like our, our businesses are, our region is, the chamber is also growing, the, so, uh, in about March of this year, the chamber board started to, to explore, uh, expanding to a new location, or just expanding in general, uh, part of our due diligence, we first looked at was, is there an opportunity in the Yum-Kum Center to, um, expand there, unfortunately, the way in which that, that building was bonded, we were unable to, uh, expand in that footprint, so the board continued some additional, uh, due diligence, uh, around a few different things, the first was to do a full overlay of our, uh, membership, to, uh, demonstrate where the growth is, and, and as no surprise, uh, all of the growth we're seeing is, uh, to the, uh, west and the south, and so that positions us more, um, one of the, the key priorities that the board was looking for, uh, was that we were gonna be centrally located, so when we, uh, when the board put together their priorities for this Business Resource Hub, and let me first start with the vision of that, the vision wasn't just to, um, build a, a chamber building, or, uh, or put in an office space for the chamber alone, but rather to have a Business Resource Hub, that could be, uh, a physical collaboration space, as well as a resource center for business owners to come and get, um, the services and, um, uh, resources that they need to grow and expand their own companies, and so our, uh, goal is to have other mission-aligned organizations co-located, uh, with the chamber, uh, organizations that you see there, uh, like SBA, SBDC, uh, North Dakota Women's Business, uh, the, the EDC, SCORE, et cetera, this, this, this innovation space would allow for collaboration and synergies, uh, to be created there, as I mentioned, the location was a really, uh, another key priority, centralized with ease of access and ample parking, the size of the facility, uh, needed would be about ten to fourteen thousand square feet, uh, there, that range would allow for things like, uh, additional programming space, offices, conference rooms, and collaboration space, and the timing of this, uh, the sooner the better, but we want to make sure that the due diligence is being done thoroughly, however, the current chamber staff, uh, many are, are officing multiple people in one office, and even some from home, because we don't have the space needed, uh, for us to, to fulfill our mission. So this is a, the, uh, visual of the overlay that I mentioned, uh, this is just, uh, a little bit of our nineteen hundred and eighty members as to where they are across the footprint of the region, and so as we looked at all of those considerations, uh, this is the proposal we're bringing in front of you, I'm joined this evening by, uh, the President of the Fargo-Moorhead Convention and Visitors Bureau, Charlie Johnson, uh, we presented to the, uh, CBB Board and asked for their input in this process around the idea of having a, um, Business Resource Hub built on city property, uh, that would then be, uh, kind of to bookend the, the green space of where the current visitor's center is, so this would provide for multiple opportunities, uh, one would be to elevate, obviously, that green space and the utilization of that, uh, but also creates significant synergies between, uh, the CBB and the chamber, so now we've got kind of a central location for visitors, as well as for business leaders, uh, looking at that, um, looking at growth and prosperity. The, uh, site, as we walked through it, um, has, uh, ample parking, uh, and allows also the location particularly of where we're proposing this, uh, would minimize the amount of green space that's taken, and it would also, uh, minimize any, uh, type of infrastructure costs that would be needed, as we wouldn't have to reroute utilities, so this is the, um, um, kind of the overview, this is a, a little bit of, uh, a diagram of what it could be, all on one floor is what the initial thought is, and something that would really complement the current, um, facade of the, uh, visitor's center space, so I'm happy to take any questions, the, the, the request of the city tonight would be, uh, to, uh, allow for the city staff, uh, to bring, uh, forward a long-term lease agreement, uh, that we could, both, both parties could work on that agreement and bring that forward to you at a, at a future date.
Any questions of Shannon? Eric, you want to define what has to happen if they want to do that?
Yeah, the city has, and state law, but city has an ordinance that, uh, addresses, uh, questions regarding disposing of or leasing of, uh, uh, public property, property owned by the city, uh, typically involves, uh, if, if there's significant value, and there's certainly value on this land, would involve some kind of a RFP process, or competitive sale, one, one or the other, could be, could be just a, a bit arrangement just for the pure, uh, pure cost of the thing, but it can also be an RFP that has more subjective elements in it, um, at least at this stage, that's, that's the extent of the research I've had, not necessarily knowing exactly what had in mind, there, there may be other alternatives, um, uh, that would fit into a category, kind of a broad category called an enterprise, but, uh, so we can, might need to do a little bit more research about exactly how the city might need, by its own ordinances, might need to approach, uh, the disposition of this property.
Mr. Gary?
Shannon, when we met, you had an idea of the lease that you were looking to have, that was, that's kind of missing from this, so for the public's knowledge, what are you looking for in a lease?
Ideally, a long-term lease, ninety-nine years, fifty years, ninety-nine years, somewhere in that, um, with the, um, um, lease agreement of a dollar per year, uh, for the lease, uh, which is a, is a, a consideration from the city, but it does also allow us to put, uh, that two million-plus-dollar, um, uh, new taxable, uh, building on the city property and increasing the city value.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so in our discussion, what I told them, I'll tell everybody else the same, this just amounts to an incentive, uh, they're not paying rent, for all intents and purposes, a dollar is, is nothing, uh, so to build this, they would be getting a pretty large incentive for ninety-nine years, if, if we sold out it, this would also, the chamber is not a government organization, we'd be allowing a nonprofit to establish themselves on city property, and I'm not sure where else in the city of Fargo we've ever done that, uh, so it's a new precedence we'd be setting, and I think it's a bad one, especially involving a large incentive attached to it, uh, I'm glad that you're expanding, I'm glad you're busy enough to need more space, uh, but this is not the role of the local government to support, and it's not the role of the city taxpayers to support.
Well, the Visitors Bureau, we do support, I think Charlie with a lease of one dollar, or some type of arrangement as well, so I think on the Visitors Bureau, the city has stepped up and done that as well, Charlie Johnson, you want to address that?
Commissioners, uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, our arrangement with the city was established long before I got the job nine years ago, but the basic- but the basic arrangement we have is we pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year in rent for the building, and the city gives us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar in-kind gift in return. That covers the land and the building. The building was constructed with the capital portion of the lodging tax, which is what funds us, the three percent lodging tax is what funds us, not just from the city of Fargo, but also from West Fargo and Moorhead. And the Fargo portion of that money, I believe, is what built that building in the first place, which opened, I think, in nineteen ninety-one or ninety-two. So that's the nature of our, we pay rent, but you give us back the same in kind.
Commissioner Preston.
I think you just answered my question. So the building is actually owned by the city?
Yes, our building is owned by the city, absolutely.
But in your case, Shannon, you're talking about owning the building, and it would be taxable? Correct, you said? Correct, like we would pay property taxes on the building, just as if it were. The building would be owned by the ci, or by the Chamber, the land by the city.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, and, you know, I'm absolutely in favor of exploring and discussing opportunities and possibilities, but I also love citizen input. And, and there's a, one citizen out there that has an immense interest in special assessments, and raised the question to me, and I'll just share this, because I think as we go forward, it suggests to me, the fiduciarily responsible thing would be to do, to do is to know how much we have invested in the property, what the costs have been, you know, just like we did with the parking ramp. Before we sold it, we knew what our investments were, and so on. And I'd like to know, similarly, not, this has nothing to do with you, but from our perspective, what are these investments, and what are the special assessments that have been attached to these properties? It's been suggested to me they're very, very high. And, and then that raises the question of, where's that all end up? Who pays it, or are they paid? I, I just, I'd like a clearer picture of that as we discuss a working relationship going forward.
Charlie, do you have special assessments on your building?
I don't believe we've been paying any special assessments, no.
That's the only buildings there right now.
But the city owns it.
The city owns the building. The city owns the building and the land, absolutely.
Bruce Scrub, do we have any specials on that building that you're aware? Or who would ask, is Kent there?
I'm sorry, Mayor and Commissioners, Kent's on vacation, and I have absolutely no idea, but we'll find that out in the due diligence period.
Thank you. Any follow-up with that, John?
No, the only thing I'll say, I really was hoping you'd move into the Civic Center. But that's just a whole nother conversation.
Chair, I might offer just one sort of data point, just to, to make clarity, and I don't offer this as an argument one way or the other, but there's a little bit of a difference between the Convention and Visitors Bureau that Charlie's with and, and this other organization. The CBB is a function of the lodging tax ordinance, and I looked in, when I was looking into this preliminarily, found a city attorney opinion from Wayne Solberg back at the time, sort of trying to identify who should own this property, what its, you know, what its origin was, what authority there was for the city to be involved. And, and again, it was all stemmed from, from the ordinance itself as being appropriate for the city to own the property. I think the city issued some bonds accordingly that helped finance the construction of the building back in nineteen ninety-two. And so that's kind of the underpinnings of this, is it is truly a sort of a creature of the city of Fargo.
So we can bring a financial report back next meeting, so we understand that. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And what is your motion?
The recommended motion to direct the staff to look into the possibility of a long-term lease agreement.
Okay, good, okay.
Including financials and cost investments over time.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Gary?
Oh.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute break till six-twenty, and then we will start talking about a moratorium to outdoor noise. Thank you. We'll bring the meeting back to order. Item forty-four is a moratorium to the outdoor sound amplified equipment used through September of two thousand and twenty-two. Jade Nielsen of Jade Presents should be speaking to us now.
Good evening. Jade Nielsen of Jade Presents, and this is Jared Hardy with Fargo Brewing Company. We were in front of you about a year ago, talking about summer of twenty-one, and you were kind enough to give us some lenience on amplified noise permits. Due to COVID, we've still struggled, we're maybe fifty percent of what our business was pre-COVID. So Carly Bischoff from my office had sent a letter requesting a discussion on whether that would be allowed through summer of twenty-two.
Now, the events I saw, you had a pretty good, good night, right? I mean, it seemed like a lot of people showed up, enjoyed the event, and it went well.
Generally speaking, yeah, we did nine events this past summer, which the city had, you folks had approved, five per month. We did not stretch to that level, but we did nine, and, and they went very well.
And at what time does the music shut down?
No later than ten P.M.
Okay. Commissioner, my commission?
Mr.? So, Mr. Chair, I guess my question is, and maybe it's not for Jade, but I, I don't know if we had any neighborhood complaints, or if you had any, and, and I don't, I guess maybe the chief can answer that too, but not that I'm aware of, I don't, I think it went okay.
Yeah, we're not aware of any neighborhood complaints. We've been very cognizant of those neighbors and, and obviously kept a curfew and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pep, or Garrett?
That was my question, I was gonna ask as well, and it looks like the chief was not, no. Okay, so that's fine. So not only am I in favor of this proposal, I think, looking forward, I think we should look at making this a permanent change, or something near it. We haven't had any problems, and, and this is basically a, a dry run. I'm not gonna call it a pile, because I don't like that word, but, you know, this is a dry run of what we could be doing, and having these events is good for, for everybody. As long as there's no complaints, and as long as people are having fun and being safe, then there's no reason for us to be overly restrictive in the future. I hope, I don't know if it's like a control, or who needs to look at this, but any motion that we have doing this, I would hope that we put that in there to, to study going forward, making this a permanent change.
Is that your motion?
It is.
To September twenty-two, with the ability to look at this as more of a change than a permanent ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the sake of disclosure, I, I would not consider this a direct fiduciary, pecuniary, financial conflict, but I've worked with Jade for years and years and years. So if anybody has any desire for me to withdraw from voting or, or talking, let me know.
So Eric, as I understand it, I have to ask the Commissioners, any of them have conflict with John voting? Is that correct, and/or do we vote on that?
Yeah, I mean, you can vote on it. Normally, the, the person that claims he may have a conflict raises the question, and it's certainly appropriate for the City Commission, according to the Attorney General's Office, to inquire of the city attorney as to whether there is a conflict or not, and I can give you my opinion about it, from, and if you're interested, I'll tell you.
What's your opinion?
Well, according to what Commissioner Strand just said, that he's worked with Jade and have been, a friendship with Jade, the issue is whether there is a direct and substantial personal or pecuniary interest. There's no bright-line test there, but it strikes me under the circumstance that it's probably not a conflict of interest, and that would be my opinion.
Okay, with all your full and vote? Okay, I get a nod from everybody. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
You know that we also will look at the ordinance and Jade, and see if there's something we need to do, change in the future because of this, or might have to figure that, if you would work with the team on that, I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief David Zabowski is gonna give us his one-year review. It's been that long already?
It's gone very fast, hasn't it, right? I remember the very first day up here, when he got to ask me about mask mandates, right? Very first meeting, that was a fun time. So it's been really a fast and enjoyable first year. I'm extremely elated to be the chief of the Fargo Police Department. I'm, we've got a lot accomplished in this year. We have, really through the efforts of our personnel, and as many of you know, major organizational change is not easy. You know, you gotta have skin in the game, and there's some bumps and bruises along the way, but the outcomes of that organizational change in terms of our capacity, efficiencies, and the environment for those working there is, is a huge benefit for everyone. So I'm really pleased with, with what we've done. I'm just gonna walk through briefly accomplishments over the year, and as you'll see, they're wrapped around the establishment of our, our very first thing that we needed to do, which was establish our new vision, mission, and core values statement. So, let's see, that works? Oh, thank you. Whoever's doing that, appreciate it. Okay, so, starting in terms of trust and accountability, the reorganization of the department, we undertook that right away, working, of course, several months on identifying roles, responsibilities, and creating the department makeup that not only provides promotional opportunities, but puts people in the right positions with the right authorities. We've added also civilian positions, where we previously had sworn positions to make the most out of the sworn positions that we had. And you create that, that org chart, I think that puts a lot of benefits in place. Go ahead, sir, thank you. Along with that, we brought in a change in philosophy with the vision, mission, and values, and introduced our department to the President's Twenty-First Century Task Force Report. And that has been implemented in all of our higher and promotional processes, and is a general foundational document for the department. We created the Professional Standards Division to increase accountability for the things that we do and, and don't do appropriately. Added some critical policy review and updates, created transparency with our website, adding our incident-based reporting, our new use-of-force reporting, the Professional Accountability Unit, internal investigation, as well as updating policies and getting them on the website. And then lastly, most recently, the introduction of the body-worn cameras. So a lot of things there in terms of trust and accountability. Safe and unified community, we increased our sense of urgency in terms of safety. So we've really focused on violent crime. Part of the reorganization creates permanent detective positions, where before we had rotational detectives who would gain a level of competency, and after five years would rotate out, and someone new would come in. Not, not good for them, not good for our community in terms of the competencies necessary to solve these serious crimes. We've enhanced our footprint downtown, expanding our DRO presence. We have the substation in progress downtown, and we're actually meeting later this week with downtown entities to discuss some options and some additional measures that can be taken to help with our bar-close situation, and some of the events that occur soon after that, that bar-close situation. We were successful in getting a new bill passed to provide some additional teeth to our narcotics drug trafficking efforts, and are joining with North Dakota BCI, BCI, to create a regional Cass County Task Force, instead of having several different entities, oftentimes doing redundant things. So that, that's gonna bolster some of our ability to deal with a large amount of drug trafficking that is resulting in a large amount of deaths and overdoses in our community. And those numbers continue to rise exponentially above even last year, which was a large increase from the year before. In terms of unified community, we have reduced silos inside the department in terms of our divisional communication that needed to improve, as, as well as with our community. So our Intelligence and Analysis Unit will now be civilianized, and it's being restructured, focusing on small amount of persons and locations that are responsible for a large amount of crime and disorder in our city. We met with both state and city prosecutors to improve processes, also ensure that we are providing them what they need to successfully prosecute crimes and reduce repeat, repeat victimization. We've focused a lot on enhancing our community engagement, and our community engagement team has created a multicultural advisory commission, which we met a couple weeks ago. And it really provides an opportunity for the, you know, we have a large amount of racial and ethnic diversity in Fargo, and to sit in a room with representatives from a multitude of countries, from Asia, Europe, et cetera, it's, it's really interesting, and it provides opportunities to build those relationships, and also help educate them about Fargo and law enforcement, et cetera. So that's, we're very excited about that. Inclusion, both internal and external. So in the department, we formed, we did our vision, mission, values team, was, was people responsible, along with the department members, for creating that. We have a uniform and appearance committee, we have a policy review committee. Our detective staffing committee did the work that ultimately led to the permanent detectives and investigator positions that we'll be implementing here very soon. Internally as well, now up to a hundred and twelve, fifty-six percent of our one-on-ones are done, so over half the department I met with individually, and we'll continue to finish those throughout this year. We, we have weekly video updates that go out to all members. We establish a directive and memo system, so that all personnel are getting a single message, and there's reference to that. And we have a shift representatives team, which is a group of individuals, sworn and civilian, across our department, who I meet with monthly to address any concerns or issues in their work areas that maybe didn't make it up to the top level. In terms of external communications, number of media interviews, press conferences, public presentations, updating our policies on the website. We've did a presentation with the Chamber a couple times here, and most recently, a couple weeks ago, as well as met with and created relationships with all of our external law enforcement and other entities, school district, things of that nature. Community relations, we have established any better relationships with many of our community organizers, who have been significant in some of the other things we'll be talking about here shortly. We've instituted some educational sessions, focusing on new Americans specifically in traffic stops, as well as non-new Americans, who also, I think, benefited from the insight in terms of, again, building the, the level of understanding of what police are trying to accomplish, how it should be done, and what, how the public can interact, so that we have a, a positive contact. We've included community members in department promotion and hire processes, and we've held a number of neighborhood and community meetings and events. Hey, our mission, looking at our mission statement, we'll be talking about community partnerships, being well-trained and forward-thinking. Okay, and again, even though we have been restricted somewhat by the, by COVID, we've managed to get out either virtually, or more in-person now, and meet a lot of the different folks in different neighborhoods and community groups in the city, and we'll continue to do that. So those listed there, it's a few of the events we did in the last year. We'll continue to build upon that. In terms of our training, we've, along with the reorganization of the department, created a shift schedule that provides a much improved work-life balance for our officers, but also provides the most officers on the street when we need them. By virtue of that new schedule, we've been able to largely increase our training and the ability of training for our personnel to train on shift versus overtime or off-shift, and, and upset their sleep patterns for the night shift officers. We've had implicit bias training. Just last week, we had the Police Executive Research Forum in town. They held a regional Train the Trainer here in Fargo. We had people from afar away as Oklahoma, and some Wisconsinite departments, that came up to get this very valuable training. It's a national program, which just had a research study come out a couple of weeks ago, where it looked at the implementation of this program and showed a twenty-eight percent reduction in use-of-force incidents, twenty-six percent reduction in citizen injury, and a thirty-six percent reduction in officer injury. And that was a research project that was done out of the University of Cincinnati, specifically focused on the value of this national program. So we're excited that early next year, those trainers will be providing that training to everyone in our department, that'll become part of our de-escalation and use-of-force policy and protocol. We have, again, the weekly in-service trainings. Our Lexipol daily training bulletins were implemented to make sure people are up to snuff on policy, and we were able to bring back motorcycle officers and retrain some bike officers, although it's cold now for them, but next summer, we'll be able to, in spring, be able to get those out in larger force. In terms of forward-thinking, the body-worn cameras and that technology, SmartForce, we just had some folks back from that conference update, and that technology is going to exponentially create a lot of efficiencies and benefits for our department, where we have a number of disparate IT platforms and pieces of information that are searchable, non-searchable, aren't readily available. We'll put that all under one, and be able to build upon the, the benefits of the technology. We'll be rolling out online reporting later this year, early next year. That will result in a, a number of fewer calls for service that don't require an officer to be present, things such as shoplifting without a suspect in custody, simple theft complaints where there's no suspect or evidence. So as you can imagine, there's a large amount of reports that officers respond to in person, and online reporting under the right criteria. under the right criteria eliminates the need to have that squad there and those officers can be doing other proactive things and responding to more significant calls. We also updated our radios. The officer wellness piece, that shift structure and adjustment and a 10-hour shift follows the research and creates that work-life balance for them. And we've expanded peer support as well. Professionalism, our reorganization, new promotional processes and leadership in place. In two weeks, on the 15th, we have our new executive staff in place. But on the 15th, I'm excited to say we'll be promoting some new lieutenants and some new sergeants. So, we're really injecting some fresh leadership at all levels of the organization. And at the beginning of next year, we'll have our permanent detective promotions and investigator spots as well. So, there's a lot of opportunities in the department right now for folks who have not had those opportunities previously. We restructured working with city leadership, the liquor control board and reporting process, also addressing, I think, an issue in the community from a public safety standpoint in terms of things such as underage drinking and safe operations of our liquor establishments. Coming up for next year, we'll be becoming involved in some department strategic planning. Recruitment and retention is certainly an issue, not only here in Fargo but nationwide. And so, that's going to be part of our continual efforts to retain and recruit good officers. We're going to be looking at our officer wellness, creating an officer wellness program that encompasses physical wellness, mental wellness, things of that nature. And in light of, you know, the most recent tragedy in West Fargo, about a year ago, we discussed with our city medical staff implementing an additional process that looks at the health of the heart. We know there's a lot of research out there, especially in law enforcement because of our job and the many ups and downs and the quickness with which we have to go from 100 miles an hour to one. And over the course of the career, that can have some really bad effect on your heart and your arteries. And that, not measuring that and getting a baseline and watching it or identifying genetic issues early can lead to some catastrophic events. So, we'll be opening that up quite broadly from that perspective. We'll have the IACP, International Association of Chiefs of Police. We have commitment from them to host, again, another regional event, the Resiliency Program called Valor, which is also a national program that helps officers in terms of their mental resiliency while engaged in this profession. We've got a mental health collaboration with Sanford that will roll out in 2022. And our Police Advisory and Oversight Board, which we're going to talk about here in the next agenda item, is part of the 21st Century Policing Recommendation. That's another thing that'll roll out in '22. And in a number of leadership programs, national ones that will be coming to Fargo and provide opportunities for our personnel to be further developed. I think that's it for that one in a nutshell. Yes?
Any questions to the Commission? I think we filed and received this, right? Commissioner Schran?
Thank you. I wish I had my notes here. Bear with me. Chief, you've moved to Fargo and you've inherited a department that has its own history. And not that many years ago, our city and department were challenged with more department morale and things like that. And yet, we all know these last few years have been really challenging to law enforcement. I'm just curious about your take on the morale, the morale in the department, how we're doing with retaining employees and recruiting new employees and keeping everybody as long as we can after we invest so significantly in them.
Sure. Thanks for that question. So, in terms of morale, I think morale is good overall. But I think there's, you know, we talk about staffing and things of that nature, that we're in a period where we have vacancies that we would love to fill but we can't fill because we don't have people to fill them. However, the creation of our academy a year ago, that process is very robust. We have a lot of applicants. We'll be starting a new applicant process in January. We had 20 people in there and we ended up graduating 14. 13 are hired. The 14th one has a job offer now and needed to finish credits. So, that group is the largest group that we've hired in one year since 2015. We've also done some interviews of other certified people who did not go, well, a couple of them did go through our academy a year ago and some went to a different academy and we're looking for positions. So, we've got some job offers out of that group. And at this juncture, until we get to our next academy class in place, which will start in May, there aren't any other options to fill vacancies. But just to give you some perspective, we currently have nine sworn vacancies and a couple, so 11 vacancies total. The sheriff's office, which is about the same size as us, has 26. And other agencies of various sizes are dealing with this same issue. In terms of the changes, organizational change, kind of as I mentioned in the beginning, is difficult. And so, we strive very much, and I have, again, not just with the one-on-ones but going out and going to roll calls and explaining this to people and even weekly videos about the stressors of organizational change and what you can expect and not expect. One of the things that also happens when there's major change in an organization, a change in philosophy and change in direction, is that some folks might look at that change and decide that it's no longer for them. It's not really what they signed on for and they would rather not do this anymore. They would rather go someplace else that has a different philosophy or a different view of the world, I guess, if you put it in a nutshell. And so, that's also extremely normal and expected when you go through organizational change. What we're seeing, though, is really a large amount of our persons who have left in 2021 are going to jobs completely out of the law enforcement realm. And that's concerning as well. And, you know, when you talk to them, there's a number of reasons from, I want to start a family and this just isn't helping me, or they just have lost, you know, and let's face it, this is a hard job. We ask them to do a lot. Over the course of their career, you know, it could be anything from environment to the change of the organization where they just feel like, this is no longer for me. Some people suffer from other issues that affect their ability to do the job and decide that maybe it's time for me to move on. And so, from my perspective, I've seen this before during major organizational changes, expected. It is no way concerning other than at the level that we're at right now, I think we would see that. But I'm also seeing on the other side of the coin, huge positive morale from all the folks who are moving up in the organization, people who were in positions and had competencies in which they weren't able to flourish and now they are. And those folks are going to be entering the ranks of supervision under the new direction that the department is in, under this vision, mission, values, and philosophy, and will help to cultivate the next generation of officers. And, you know, the other piece that's really big for us next year is that whole officer wellness, physical, emotional, mental wellness, because we do need to really strive to take care of these folks. And, you know, I think all of us would have loved to have this a year ago. But, I mean, just looking at the things we've accomplished in a year, and that is not by any means a low priority item, but it does take having the right people in the position to get this thing rolling. And then laying out those parameters, getting our resources together, and then starting to work on it. And we'll be on that right away at the beginning of the year.
Other questions? Okay, we'll go to item two, letter of part creation of the Police Advisory and Oversight Board. Chief Sobrowski?
Thank you, Commissioners. I am joined by Assistant City Attorney Nancy Morris. And so, the letter of support that you have before you is creating the first ever Fargo Police Advisory and Oversight Board. This is a culmination of a lot of work over many months going back to, I believe, April, between community members, the police department, city leadership, in terms of addressing concerns from community members about trust, transparency, accountability in the police department. The establishment of a board like this is not unusual or unheard of. It's in many states and many departments in different ways. This group, I think, over the course of the last six months or so, has dealt with and made our way through a lot of difficult discussions in terms of, you know, the efficacy of this board, how we can put it together, how it would be run, what the value would be on both sides of the coin from the police department and the community. And I think we've made significant progress in that realm. I think that it's going to have a positive impact on community relations, education, outreach, and provide a transparent mechanism for regular police community interaction, trust-building, and accountability. In addition, it is also a recommendation in the President's 21st Century Task Force Report, the creation of a civilian board. So, what this does for us is create a board of individuals representative of the city that we can meet with monthly to discuss significant policy issues, input or concerns, in large part, as you can imagine, involving internal investigations, use of force, new technology that might be concerning to the community. You know, we talk about body cameras. You can talk about facial recognition. There are a number of things now and in the future that might be very good and beneficial for the department and the community that having a board like this and being able to discuss and take input and feedback and find consensus on some of those issues is very beneficial. Again, the biggest piece to me is creating that, you know, this board will have some training as well, is creating that level of understanding so that we can discuss issues and address also issues that are of concern or that where accountability is necessary. But I think it's going to help build that knowledge base as these members representing the board and the city go out and talk to their other groups that they, you know, their neighborhoods, their people that they represent out in the community, and really be kind of that buffer between what the police department's doing and what the community at large may think is going on or may hear versus here's what's actually happening. And here's a board of committed individuals that we're working with to address these issues. I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Nancy Morris, were you going to make any comments?
So, just briefly, so what you have before you now is a draft ordinance that is the culmination of a number of ordinances. We looked at a number of jurisdictions and did a pros and cons and did some combination, put it in our format. So, we looked at probably at least 10 or more jurisdictions that do already have police advisory and oversight boards and worked to put an ordinance together in our formatting. So, again, this is, it's the culmination of research of existing boards. We did look at our open meetings and open records laws to ensure compliance with those requirements and also looked at due process requirements for officers in their positions with the city. So, they have civil service rights and we have taken that into account when they have an opportunity for hearing and investigation. So, before you now is for receive and file an ordinance draft for your consideration.
Questions? Commissioner Pepcart?
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question. I have a comment. The Oversight Board for the Police Department is us. Isn't that true? You're the liaison. So, to me, I believe that this is redundancy. So, I don't, I won't support it. Thank you.
Commissioner, or Chief, you want to explain that?
Yes. The board doesn't make policy decisions from that perspective. The Commission does have final oversight of anything. But what it does allow is for the board to bring forward concerns about policies or have those discussions to increase that level of understanding. When we go through situations like use of force, well, here's a perfect example. Last year, mid-year, when there was a discussion about chokeholds, right? And there was concern in the community that our department policy did not prohibit chokeholds. But there also wasn't this communication piece in place and it wasn't an opportunity to have that discussion because in reality, the fact that it wasn't in there didn't practically change anything because we don't train chokeholds. Chokeholds are not a means to take someone into custody. They would only be used to defend somebody's life. And so, the fact that it wasn't specifically in the policy did not mean that the department condoned it or would advocate for it in any way. And so, there are a number of examples like that. Again, just because, you know, it's understandable from a community perspective. They don't see those words in there, therefore they feel that this is missing and must be in there. Well, what this board provides is that buffer for that discussion. And that doesn't mean that we wouldn't agree with some of that, and we will in some of those areas and say, you know what, this might be a good idea to add this to a policy. But those kinds of discussions won't be in the Commission chambers anymore. And I think that provides an appropriate venue for us to sit down and have those discussions before they get to that point.
Mr. Chairman? I strongly disagree with that. I think this is the appropriate place to have those discussions. And to have it with unelected officials, which appointed by whoever, that's not appropriate. And at the end of the day, the bottom line is, it's us. We're the ones that should be deciding this. And this is where it should be talked about. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Preston?
So, I'm highly encouraged by this. I think what you've put together sounds really good. I don't see this being any different than Liquor Control Board or other kind of advisory groups, except that it will help with communication in the community, which I think is wonderful. I mean, it's something that will be real beneficial. I do have a question, however, in regards to the appointment process. Have you thought through that and how that would happen?
I can speak to that. There has been some discussion about who may be on a selection committee and then asking for applications of the public. And that selection committee will be forming that application process. And then appointment to this board will be presented to this body for confirmation.
Commissioner Schran?
Thank you, Mayor. I would say that initially, this is going to be another important accomplishment if we can get it done right. And your leadership chief has taken us down many avenues that the community's been looking for. On the other hand, we want it to work. And we want it to be customized for our local community. So, I really embrace almost entirely all of this, but I have one concern that I'll share. And I'll preface it by looking at number seven, number 12, where when you're talking about membership, you don't want anybody who's been involved with law enforcement in the preceding five years. I get that. But I would like to have the same limit or window for people who've had previous involvement with law. You know, if somebody's had a misdemeanor, somebody's had a felony, I don't think we should forever preclude them from being engaged citizens after they've done their rehab, their growth, they're reconnecting to their community, reestablished themselves, gotten new structure. And so, that's, I would like us to revisit entirely number seven. And if nothing else, my suggestion would be for number seven, that we use the exact same words you have in number 12. So, number seven would be, may not have a conviction for any of the following offenses in the previous five years. So, there's a window there that they're not forever. You know, we have lots of examples of people who've been rehabilitated, people who come back into life, people who even get chances to vote again after they've had run-ins with the law. So, I'd like us to revisit number seven and at a minimum, put a timeline on there so that we're not forever precluding folks. Because sometimes people who've had some engagement with law enforcement will have some real practical knowledge and experience that we maybe can't discount either.
Well, I think one of the reasons that we wouldn't be able to do that would be some of the training that they're going to receive that may involve firearms. And so, there's state and federal law that prohibit certain individuals from handling firearms. And I think the provisions that are in here, while I understand your concerns, I think are necessary. This is a board that's going to have a lot of integrity and I think a lot of involvement in what law enforcement does. These are very similar to parameters that officers must also comply with. So, I don't think in this case that it's too much to ask of a group with that type of responsibility and involvement. I also think that from the perspective of the police department, and I've explained this to all of our members, gone over this potential ordinance, that I think it would, that they understand and see the value in this. I think if we diminished those qualifications, that we would have great skepticism in the police department in terms Police Department in terms of the members on the board that may have some of this in their background.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. I would like to see us explore a happy middle ground. You know, for example, we have a really successful F-5 project in town. We all know them.
I'm sorry, a what?
The F-5 project. You know, and Adam Martin and his cadre of people have really evolved our thinking in so many fronts for people who've come out of incarceration and are challenged with getting back into life. So my desire would be, I don't want us to etch a change on this tonight, but if, I'd like to ask us to have a discussion at a minimum about are there some areas in here where we can loosen the parameters up that would still accommodate your concerns about firearms and handlings and other, but also will give us openings for people who've been there in their pasts. I mean, even tonight, in our liquor control, we're talking about people 10, 15, 20 years ago, felonies or misdemeanors. You know, so that's my desire, is I don't want to have this be a deal breaker for me. But if we can maybe look at, or we can discuss internally some possible amendments in going forward that might loosen it up so we're not precluding as many people from the opportunity to participate in the future if it fits for them then and us then also.
Okay, now we can look at that.
I'm sorry?
We can look at that. Again, I, you know, I think we just have a discussion about that. I would, I think this is the best way to go for it. You gotta remember that we're getting seven people out of a population of 126,000. So I'm pretty confident we can find seven good representatives of the whole city that will not have this as an issue, but we can certainly, you know, look at this and see what we think.
And I'd be happy to help. Commissioner Gary?
Nancy, how many boards do we have established in ordinance? Two?
No, I don't know the number for that, but there is the Liquor Control Board, the Planning Commission, the Native American, and the Human Relations Commission.
And Arts and Culture.
And Arts and Culture, thank you.
And they're all in ordinance?
Yes.
We have this weird hodgepodge of boards that are in ordinance and ones that aren't. Liquor Control's new, and I had the same comments then when we established that in ordinance. It creates an inflexible system. So if in five years we want to have 10 people on the board instead of seven, now we gotta change the law instead of just changing a number and having a quick vote in the City Commission to do that. I don't like making boards into law. It doesn't make any sense to me. So we can do this, I don't have a problem with the establishment of this, but I think it makes it very inflexible. And, you know, to John's concern, if, maybe we want to have someone from the F-5 project on there for a little bit, see what they think, see what we think, see if it's beneficial or not. And then if it didn't work out, then we change it back, or if it did work, we changed our policy, instead of going through this process of multiple readings and the inflexibility that goes along with that. So I'll support this if we don't make it into a law. We make it into a policy like we traditionally do with all boards until whenever a point we decide to make all the laws.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Preston?
So Nancy, can you just elaborate a little bit in regards to, you know, some of this looks like it would be appropriate for bylaws instead of an ordinance. I'm thinking membership. Can you elaborate why all of that was put into the ordinance? And I believe strongly that the purpose, the activities, the responsibilities, all of that should be in an ordinance form, but some of this felt like maybe bylaws?
I don't disagree that some of it could have been in the bylaws, but the discussion was to put it in the ordinance when we were meeting as a group, and that way then it is there for everybody to see and know what that guidance is. Of course, the bylaws can be published on the website, and there will be some governing documents that once the board is formed, they will be able to adopt as their, as their governing documents.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the suggested motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'd second it. It's an excellent ordinance. It's something that Chief and Nancy have worked on for several months. It's something in response to the community, it is not an oversight committee in the sense that the commission is an oversight of the police force. It's a big step forward for our police force to try to have an advisory and oversight committee to work with us, get better education in the community. That's truly what it's mostly for, because both sides of the party can do that. And like it or not, Commissioner Pepcorn, this is an intimidating group to come before the commission if you're trying to get certain things to happen in our community by certain members of our community. I'm disappointed, John, if you don't want to support an oversight committee, this is a, this is top-notch what police forces are doing all across the country. This is not just an isolated event for our community. And I feel very strongly that we've worked hard at this to come up with wording, types, everything that allow the police to have some input into it and allow the community to have input into it, which is very critical to our community as we coercively try to get along. So I would strongly support it. Dave, as we take the vote, you will have to take over as chair for that part.
Mr. Mayor?
Now, Davis.
Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Strand?
I support this entirely. I just have some issues with some of the detail. So like what I, the reason I wasn't seconding Commissioner Preston's motion was I wouldn't have required it to come to the next meeting for a first reading, because I'm not ready for a first reading, but I'm ready to work on this. So if this makes sense, I'd like to improve it.
If you receive and file the first reading, you can make changes all during this week. You have the same ability to do what we're doing now. You get to, you can work with the chief and try to work out different language. First reading may come up different because you amended it.
So I'm on board, as long as we know that I'm going to put, try to get some fingerprints on this to input some of my concerns, because I really do think it's a necessary good step. But I'm concerned about that risk of people out there that we might be precluding from participating so loosely.
Commissioner Gerg.
And John, I'm gonna do the same thing. You know, I'm not gonna support it the way it sits, but if this passes for its first reading at the next meeting, I'm gonna try to get some of the stuff pulled out of the ordinance and make it so we can make it into policy instead. Like telling exactly what the makeup is, to me, is very foolish. We can have that discussion here, and it's gonna change as things change in our community. So I don't want to have to go through multiple readings to change the law every time we want to make a single change in this ordinance. Establishing the committee as in the law, fine, but many, many things need to be put exactly in there. So I'm gonna ask for changes, too.
Commissioner Preston?
So either Nancy or Chief, can you indicate in regards to the individuals who are probably eliminated because of your list of requirements or qualifications there? Is there a, or can you imagine there would be a process for those individuals to actually address the board and get their issues up on the table with the board?
I would imagine that when we set up the vetting process, that we would follow it, and that both from the Police Department and a community perspective, we would feel comfortable with the people who are in that position, because again, I think this is an extremely important board that has a lot of responsibilities in terms of community and police. So I think a higher bar is necessary and required. Could we look at some time limitations for some of these? Yes, perhaps we could do that for some of the categories in seven. But to be honest with you, I don't think that I could support a lot of changes in there, and I doubt the Police Department would as well, because this is a board that's going to also be engaged with them. And I think that it's important that they know that this group of folks meets this level of requirement.
Maybe I wasn't real clear in my question. My question was, if an individual has a concern or an issue to be brought to the board, do you foresee that issue being able to be on the table?
Okay, I'm sorry. So yes, they would go to the, an issue from the community would go to the board chair for an agenda, yes. So I apologize, I misunderstood what you said, or what you asked. Yes, it would go to myself and the board chair for agenda items. So we anticipated in our discussion that there might be a lot of things coming in and that we would have to work collaboratively to basically prioritize and vet certain issues. Some of the work that is being done by the Human Relations Committee is actually, would now fall into this venue and would come off their plate as, I think, going in a different direction as to their responsibilities. So yes, there would be that opportunity, and the meeting would be open just like any other meeting.
Any other comments or questions? I guess now I get to make my final comment. Words mean things, and what is called is the Oversight Board. We're the Oversight Board. This group of seven unelected, whoever they are, are going to be now called the Oversight Board of the Fargo Police Department. That's it. So I think we're ready. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Gary?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Chief, we're still up there discussing speeding vehicles.
Brian, are you able to bring up that last slide in the PowerPoint? Okay. So as some of you might be aware, we've had a number of complaints citywide about speeding and racing, and that was, it's been an ongoing issue for some time. So we really took a enhanced enforcement approach in some of these areas where we've been getting a lot of complaints. So over the course of, is that about a one-week timeframe, two-week timeframe maybe? You issued 71 citations in those different areas. You can just kind of see the different categories, but a lot of speeding. Of course, we've also had a number of cars that didn't stop for us and fled, and, you know, not much that we can do in terms of that, but we were able to have a pretty significant impact in some of those large traffic corridor areas. We'll continue to work on that. We'll get the benefit of weather here pretty soon. But we're already, as part of our 2022 planning, we're coming up with some new tactics and approaches to some of the racing and speeding in the city. So we'll be working on that over the winter. Aside from any questions, I just wanted to give you some, a view of what kind of activity to accomplish.
Commissioner Gerg.
Chief, are you able to do just random patrols these days, or are you so busy that you're just answering phone calls and going to the calls?
Well, no, I think it's based on time of day, but no, we're able to do proactive, this is all proactive activity. So I mean, it, you know, some days are different than others, obviously, and some times are different than others, but by and large, there's opportunities for proactive enforcement. And then as we add to our, right now, we're training 13 new officers. As we get 13 more bodies into the actual ranks, it creates more of those opportunities. So, I mean, there's a lot going on right now between the busyness of the fall, we're going into a slower period here pretty soon, but also the training that's going on. And so all of these training officers are constantly with someone new, and so that, obviously, things take longer to accomplish.
Any other questions? Commissioner Preston?
So I have made this statement to you before, Chief. It seems like this is, yes, it's a large part of law enforcement issue, but it seems like it's a broader issue as well. And one of the questions I had, I don't see Brenda out there, is any, oh, there you are. Or, oh, there, she has a mask on, I couldn't see. Are there any kind of temporary road adjustments that could be made? Because we're talking arterials that are wide and they look and feel like race tracks. Is there any kind of temporary adjustments we can make?
You know, not at the top of my head. I can visit with Jeremy. The concern I have is those arterials, and they're arterials that need to be moving vehicles. And so as far as a temporary-type solution, there's just nothing that's coming at me immediately. Like I said, I can visit with our traffic engineer a little bit and just see if he can come up with anything more we can do. You know, the first thing that would, would jump out at us would be to put up the, this is your speed. But then sometimes that makes them go faster to see what their speed is. So it's got some counter effects to it. And so I'll visit with Jeremy a little bit more to see if there's, there's any other solutions he's read about or anything else that he can maybe think of.
The other thing I'd ask is that I know this is happening across the country. So what are the other cities doing with us? Maybe a little research on that side?
Well, and we've done that. There really isn't a magic bullet. It's almost, it's like the hiring, there's no magic bullet to fix that. So there are some different, we've got some different tactics that maybe we could employ to help us. As you're aware, we're not going to engage in pursuits of vehicles that just have traffic violations, so I think that gets frustrating for the cops, but they also understand the danger of the pursuit kind of thing versus the violation that's known to us. So, I mean, there's just not, technology-wise, maybe there'll be something down the road, but we've been, and I have been also, really looking for things that would help us. So we have one or two ideas, but there isn't anything out there that everyone is having the same issues. And the only difference is in some areas, they might pursue you and do a, an intervention tactic and pitch your car, basically, and get you into custody. And I don't know if that's something that we want to see routinely in our city streets. You know, across the river, they'll do that in Clay County. That's really just more about what does the community want in terms of traffic enforcement? How aggressive do you want to be? But there aren't really any other options out there.
I guess, and if I could make one more comment, that'd be done. You know, in my mind, this is serious enough that we need to attack it pretty hard. Now granted, maybe the winter will bring different behaviors, but I'm worried that we're gonna have somebody get killed. And we know that this is happening. So, you know, we're negligent if we aren't trying to do as much as we possibly can to stop this behavior. It's crazy. People driving 80 miles an hour on University, it's nuts.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Preston. This is not a small issue. It's not the biggest issue in the world, but it is something in our community. I kind of compare it to the young people on bikes that are doing wheelies around you on Broadway. You know, that happened to me one time, and I was sitting there looking, I didn't know what to do. You know, I had bikes all around me, everywhere, and almost hitting the cars in front of me. I just stopped. But, you know, and I have a friend who lives up on North Broadway, and when I go visit there, he says, listen to those cars. They're, you're right, Brenda, there's a, on Broadway, right around 13th Avenue, there's a speed thing. They seem to get to it, and they rev their engines and speed up. So I'm not sure the answer is, I would be curious who these people are, if there's people's children, like the bikes, I'd say, let's appeal to the families. Let's talk to their parents. Let's get them to, hey, don't let your children go out and do this. And I'm not sure if the speeders and the racers are the same children or their children of, you know, but somehow we need to get to their core values, that this isn't what you do in a community.
Well, and you're right. And so I do have actually one legislative solution, because we don't have the ability in North Dakota to hold the licensed owner responsible for those violations. If we did, the cars that flee, the cars that don't stop, we could, we could charge the owner, write the citation to them or refer him for prosecution. It's called owner's responsibility. So in Wisconsin, they have an owner's responsibility law that covers a lot of traffic violations. That's something that wouldn't be easy, but certainly be willing to work with all of you on a legislative effort to get that, because that's really what we need. We need to have the ability to hold someone accountable, because right now, I can go to your house and say, who was driving your car? You may or may not tell me, and you don't have to, and there's not much I can do about it. But you're right, when one of these cars was involved in a fatal accident, and whoever was driving it flees, we're still in the same position. I mean, we may or may not find out who was driving that car, and there isn't anyone else to be held responsible. So that onus, if you will, would be a big incentive for people to tell their kids what they shouldn't, shouldn't do driving their cars or their friends, et cetera, and help us on the enforcement piece as well. Because there's not much in the way of technology out there, but there could be some legislation that would help.
Commissioner Strand?
Eric, is that something we could do at the city level? Or do we need to, do we have a state preempting us from doing things like?
No, I think it's possible that we can do it at a city level.
We should explore that.
Okay.
You guys want to keep going here? Everybody okay? Just about to the end here. Dangerous building located at 1418 First Avenue North.
Dangerous building located at 1418 First Avenue North.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Inspections Department is here to present an update on the demolition of the structure at 1418 First Avenue North, excuse me. This building was presented at the regular meeting of the City Commission on May 3rd, 2021. At that time, the commission declared this structure a dangerous building and ordered the removal of the structure by June 30th, 2021. By June 30th, this building had been demolished to an acceptable amount to allow the extension of the deadline. The reasons we see as an extension as a reasonable option for this property is the progress in the sale of the property. There is a signed purchase agreement for this property with a closing date of December 1st, 2021. The purchaser is J Street Properties LLC, and they will be developing it into a 90-unit, or 90-unit, four-story multifamily housing facility. J Street Properties has submitted an application for TIF for the project on October 20th of this year, and if you would like to have more information on that, Jim Gilmore has indicated he's willing to answer any questions on the project. The timeline that J Street Properties has offered for the development of this property is for final demolition of the site to begin in late winter, depending on the status of the TIF application, with the construction of the new building to begin in April, or in the spring of 2022, and possible completion date of summer 2023. Our department feels confident in the timeline and plan and would like this project to move forward with as little involvement from our team during demolition process as possible. We will keep communications with J Street Properties throughout the demolition and redevelopment process to ensure a timely completion of the project, and I'll stand for any questions on this one.
Any questions, bike commissioners? Thank you, Sean. Good report. Update on election and city governance task force approval schedule. Mike Rattlinger to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. I'll be brief this evening. Two weeks ago, on October 18th, the commission approved the formation of the 2021 Election and City Governance Task Force. In that time, from our last meeting to tonight, our internal recommendations team did meet last Wednesday. We talked about our process moving forward and how we want to get the word out to solicit interest from the community in serving on this task force. And so, I just want to acknowledge again our internal recommendations team, Mayor Mahoney, Commissioner Strand, Bruce Scrub, Terry Hogan, and myself. We met and talked about a few different strategies to try to get the word out, and I just also want to thank Terry for his assistance in creating the statement of interest form that we've included within the packet. I've itemized some various venues in which we're going to utilize to get the word out, including the city website, our social media accounts, our news and events section of the city website in particular, so it rises right to the top of the webpage, so that individuals can see how to apply for this opportunity. And we're also going to create a form, no different than other boards and commissions, a web form for our citizens who are interested in serving, to provide us their contact information directly. The idea is that this information will come back, and our internal recommendations team, working with Dr. Jeff Schatz, will work to sort through those applications and over the holidays, between Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and then by early January, come back with recommendations for the appointment of these task force members. So, what's included in the suggested motion this evening is an approval of the concept schedule that's contained on the cover memorandum, and that is four meetings that will try to wrap up by the end of March, and then Dr. Schatz would come back to the City Commission by the end of April with a task force report of findings, and that would consist of a final report to the commission, and at that point, the commission would adopt and receive and file those findings from the task force. So, again, the recommendation this evening is to approve that concept schedule, and we'll keep proceeding to getting the word out, and I have the answer to questions you would have this evening. Thank you.
Any questions? Bike? Commissioner Preston.
So, Mike, I've expressed in the past concern about making sure there was plenty of time for all the task force members to get on the same page, the same information base. The task force that met in '16 had six months, and I think we were, if I remember right, we were meeting every other week. So, I mean, we're talking four meetings? Do you think you're going to get it all done in four meetings?
So, thank you for the question, Commissioner Preston. In talking to Dr. Schatz, his preferred facilitation model is to work with a longer-duration meeting, maybe an hour and a half or a two-hour meeting, and have a more meaningful, in-depth meeting and fewer meetings, so four, perhaps five, if we needed to have a fifth meeting. I'd try to wrap that work in a more of a timely manner, so that the task force doesn't carry us into late spring, into summer, et cetera. He really thinks that it's reasonable to work backwards from that submission date of findings by the end of April. And so, what we will, obviously, this is all contingent, of course, as well, on the availability of our task force members, and so that's why you'll see that we've only tried to put up some sideboards for some potential dates, but this will all be contingent on their availability. So, if we find that, in fact, they are not available, or they need more time, we'll certainly work to do that. But we'll be working with Dr. Schatz on a final scope of work for his services, but he really thought this is the best way to get to the essence of the issues and provide a meaningful report back to the City Commission, yet late winter, early spring. So, more to follow on that. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Last item, discussion regarding portfolio communications relative to the organizational chart. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just simply, we had an internal communication recently where it was suggested to us with good reason that many of our staff folks are just overwhelmed and up to their ears with COVID challenges and responsibility challenges. It was suggested to us commissioners that we really be honed in on our roles, who are our portfolios, who are our communications go through. And one of the suggestions was that we, if you have a portfolio, you communicate it through the administrator that's overseeing those portfolios. I thought we should discuss this, because that's really kind of a paradigm change in our mindset about the role of a commissioner relative to their portfolios, yet I really appreciated the org chart and the flow of authority that we now have clear in front of us. But I thought we should just touch on that topic about our roles as individual commissioners relative to the bigger body, and when we're not, or how we cannot burden staff excessively, but on the other hand, how we can be efficient and effective.
And let me clarify that, John. You should work with your department heads. You should be working with them. But we have our bodies of work kind of identified for the next year, and it's just a request out of the commissioners, which many of you don't, I mean, some of you have interactions or have different ideas, but if we're going to kind of make some new ideas or do something new, I'm just asking us to tone it down a little bit this fall, just so that people can get caught up. I have people who've never taken a vacation, and people haven't taken vacations forever, and we've got such a dedicated staff, oftentimes when we ask a question, they'll answer it. I mean, I've talked to some employers that don't allow emails over the weekend, because what will happen with our team is they'll start working on it on the weekend. So, we're telling people, we're kind of double-talking. We say, "Take time off, take some time to rejuvenate, do these different things. Oh, by the way, I have five questions I want you to answer." And like it or not, Eric did an answer on a Sunday. I mean, the complete answer is done on a Sunday, and it's kind of like, "I'm just asking you guys, maybe just give them a little breathing room, let us work on the work plans that we have, and if it's something where you want to change a work plan or do something, just let's encourage Mike or Bruce to just be involved if it's something that's major and we have to do a lot of different things." But oftentimes, my department heads feel very loyal to you as commissioners and want to please you, and sometimes I think they add more to the staff work, and they don't want to say, "Hey, we're getting to the end of our string here," but I feel we just have to be a little more cognitive of where we sit as an organization.
Mr. Chairman, if I could see.
Commissioner Preston.
You know, I think perhaps some of this came from, I had requested a meeting with you and with Jill from HR, and Michael was there, because I had been hearing, and rightfully so, that people were overwhelmed. And, you know, I think what I tried to communicate at that meeting was, we are, as a community, we have always been very cognizant. When a flood happens, everybody's pretty well-aware of staff role in getting us through a flood. While with COVID, we've had a flood experience for the past year and a half, and we probably have had five or six waves coming at us. So, staff have had to deal with that, and then also with the regular work. And what we talked about at that meeting was expressing strong gratitude to the staff, a big thank you for everything that everybody has picked up and carried through, but also ways to try to address some of that sense of overwhelm and being overwhelmed. You know, and some of it was related to HR policy changes, where we allowed work from home, and then we didn't, so trying to revisit that, as well as, you know, HR probably needs to have some resources to really try to get a handle on why that overwhelmed feeling is out there, and how do we begin to address that, and probably assigning some resources to that. So, I do think that this overwork, overwhelmed sense needs to be addressed directly with additional resources, or at least some acknowledgement of that existing and what is causing it. And, you know, I don't know that with this whole COVID thing, we have taken the opportunity to raise up and make real visible what the city staff has done through that time, and to acknowledge that publicly, so the public understands.
Any other comments? Commissioner Strand? Close it out? You're okay? Okay, very good. Any other business of the group tonight? Do you have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Check it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.